You OK, Debbie? OK, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting November 13, 2023. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Peterson.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Uh, here.
Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I see the lights are on at the tennis court, so it still must be fall. So I just had a brief comment, and I don't know if other council members want to comment, but I just wanted to comment on the election we had last week, especially about the marijuana issue. It's been all marijuana all the time in our city. But so we had the election on the marijuana dispensaries in downtown Rochester. These proposals were defeated 89% on one and 87% on the other. These were historically high numbers and historic defeat for the yes on the marijuana proposals. So I believe Rochester rose up and said no to marijuana dispensaries in our city, no to outside business interests telling us how to live, and no to deceptive and cynical advertising. And we said yes to the people running our great city. We said yes to the people maintaining our family-oriented downtown and to local control of our government. So we're going to ask administration and the city attorney to provide a kind of after-action plan to see what happened. I mean, we know what happened, but, you know, what can the city do, if anything, in the future and just kind of take a long, hard, deep dive into this issue going forward. But I believe that people spoke. I believe people do not want marijuana dispensaries in our downtown. And I want to just thank all the volunteers who went door-to-door across our great city. I want to thank people who put up signs, and I want to thank people who talked neighbor to neighbor, person to person, resident to resident. We got the word out. We got the vote we wanted. And I want to say congratulations to our city. Our city came together. Congratulations to the residents. A job well done, and we won this one. So congratulations to everybody. So thank you. Does anybody else like to say something? Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. A few weeks ago, when, or probably a couple of months ago, when we commented on this, our personal opinions, I said, when you have a bully, you punch them in the nose, and the bully goes away. And as the mayor said, the vote turnout was, we punched the bully in the nose, and they can go back to Saginaw where they came from. I want to thank, there were so many volunteers, but there's four people I really want to call out. Kim and Jeff Russell, who sort of picked up the ball and said, let's start the grassroots focus of this, and sort of quarterbacked it. Christian Hauser, I wish I could talk like he talks when he comes and puts his lawyerly spin on things, but he really provided a lot of facts around this. And then my colleague here, Marilyn Trent and her team, with all the marketing that was so good that the other side decided to emulate it, poorly, I might say.
I would say so.
So but again, as the mayor said, you know, we're not against the use of marijuana or gummies or whatever. It was really the dispensaries in our downtown and the impact on our traffic and our historic downtown that was really the issue, and it was great to see that our residents stood up and fought back. So thank you very much to everybody who put, as the mayor said, there were so many volunteers, too many to mention, but we really rose up, and I hope they never come back.
Councilmember Trent.
Uh, yes. OK, so 41% of our citizens came out to vote, and it was the largest voter turnout in an off-year. External influences crafted the ballot proposals, individuals who are disconnected from our community and unconcerned about our city's welfare. Their defeat is a testament to the unity and determination of ordinary citizens prevailing against a well-funded external entities seeking to wrest control from our local governance. Each person's involvement, no matter the scale, holds significance. It serves as a potent reminder that every voice matters, and every vote has the potential to shape our collective future. The foundational principle of one person, one vote remains a cornerstone of our democracy, and it's a privilege we must always cherish and never take for granted. In light of this experience, I propose the formation of a small committee. This group would collaborate with an expert to delve deeper into our recent challenges and analyze and learn from them, preparing us for the likelihood of similar hurdles in the future. Preparation is critical. We must brace ourselves for the next obstacle. We have to be ready for the next challenge. And also, I'd like to thank councilmember Mark Albrecht. He was not a slacker. He was out there fighting the good fight, Mayor Bixson and Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Salvia. And councilmember Gould, out there holding signs, out there doing their job. So thanks so much.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. You know, Mayor, I think your words summarized the issues really well. I just really want to thank the residents. Thank you. You showed up. You know, we heard you didn't want this, but you actually showed up and voted. So thank you. Thank you for voting. I'd also like to thank Ben Gibanelli, the DDA chair, for his open letter that he recently penned after the election, which pulled back the veil of the money behind open stores. And in particular, a lot of stats around open stores and their similar strategies that they attempted in three Wayne County cities and three Oakland County cities, including ours. If you follow the money, you can always see what the strategy is. And according to their campaign financing, they spent the most on Rochester and were defeated the strongest in Rochester. So thank you, Rochester. Thank you for showing up. Thank you for voting. And I'd just like to say, let's get on with what we do best in Rochester. Let's celebrate Christmas.
Yep.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank the citizens of Rochester. We started discussing this a couple of meetings back and brought everyone's attention. 350 people inside of Rochester voted to put this on the ballot, something we could not stop. But then I implored the citizenry, it's up to you. You decide whether you want this. Get informed about the issues, the impact it would have on our downtown, and you decide. And I applaud you for making a good decision with good concern on the remain. Now, I want to warn everyone, they can come back every election and do the same thing. So let's be vigilant, let's stay focused on the issue, and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Well, I think we've celebrated that enough.
Yeah, I think so.
No, that was a great victory. All right, next to public comment, scheduled, non-scheduled presentations. The first one we want to do is a proclamation to recognize the 50th anniversary of Lanyab. So we have a proclamation tonight, and I will read it, to recognize 50 years anniversary of Lanyab, whereas for 50 years, the merchants of downtown Rochester have expressed their gratitude for their customers annually on a special night of the year with an event called Lanyab, whereas Lanyab is a longstanding tradition in downtown Rochester which kicks off our holiday season. Whereas merchants celebrate Lanyab, which is Creole for a little something extra, I wonder how many people know that one, by offering their customers a little something extra. And now therefore be it proclaimed that on this day, November 13, 2023, the city council in celebration of the 50 anniversary hereby proclaims Monday, November 20, which is next Monday, Lanyab, 2023 Lanyab Day. So we have Mr. Tony La Puma, who is the vice chair of the DDA to accept this, and we will present this to him. So congratulations to the DDA and to our Lanyab. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Come around and... Thank you. I'd like to say something.
Kristi would have loved to have been here today.
Here, I'll take a picture. I got it.
She's at the...
Want to get a picture?
Kristi's at the...
Business Expo.
Business Expo. Thank you.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Kristi's working. Yes. For the city. Do I say something about Lanyab?
Like I said earlier, Kristi would have loved to have been here, but she's working hard at that Christmas Expo, and they had a heck of a turnout.
Oh, my gosh.
But this year is going to be a very special Lanyab. We're all excited. A lot of surprises. So come next Monday, everyone should be there. Thank you.
There is a big surprise that the city manager has sworn me to secrecy on, but we will, you will all love.
But you can talk about the road being closed.
That you can do. Yes, Rochester Road, Main Street, is going to be closed for Lanyab for the first time from 5:30 to 9:30. And we will still turn the lights on at 7:00, and there might be a little surprise at 7:00, and it's going to be good. So I welcome everybody to come. Is that pretty good, Nick? It kept my...
Yes, sir. Good job.
OK. So next, we have a presentation, a proclamation. This is a night every couple of years where some of our colleagues are going to be leaving us, and we want to kind of celebrate their time on the council and also, you know, their leaving. So the first person is councilperson Ann Peterson. She was not able to be here tonight because she's on business. Brian, is councilmember Peterson logged in?
She is.
OK. So I'm going to read the resolution that we're giving to councilmember Peterson, and then councilmember Peterson, I believe, would like to speak, and then we can all speak if you'd like to. So whereas Ann Peterson was elected to city council November 2015 and served through November 23, Ms. Peterson is a proud resident and has been committed to making Rochester a great place to live, whereas Ms. Peterson has contributed her time, energy, and passion to the city boards and commissions, including City Beautiful, Planning Commission, DDA, RAR, Historical Commission, Infrastructure Committee, Budget and Finance Committee, Dinosaur Hills, Sister City Committee, Pink Creek Trailway Committee, Facilities Committee, Grant Committee, Dementia Age and Friendly Committee, and Residential Property Task Force Committee. These are not all at the same time, but it's a lot of committees. Whereas Ms. Peterson also served on the Michigan Municipal League Economic Development and Land Use Committee, whereas Ms. Peterson worked to expand her knowledge by completing the Greater Rochester Leadership Program, the Citizens Police Academy, Citizens Fire Academy, and the Master Citizen Planner Program, whereas the city of Rochester appreciates and respects Ms. Peterson for her devotion, dedication, and service to the city. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council hereby expresses their sincere appreciation to Ann Peterson for her years of service. So let's give... And Ms. Peterson, welcome from wherever you are to our city council meeting. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I know there's a little bit of a delay in the internet, but I am in California, so I apologize for not being there tonight on this very important evening, but work did take me here. So I did prepare a little something to read to everyone, so you'll just bear with me. It's really, I'm really sorry that I'm not there for everyone tonight.
We do have flowers for you here.
Everyone here and at home. Wow, what an amazing... Great, I froze. What an amazing eight years as your city councilperson. God has definitely blessed this journey for me, from resident friendships and professional relationships and so much more. I am truly honored to have served you and be your voice and representative through the years. I will continue to play an active role and follow the city and attend meetings where I first began this journey myself, protecting residential property rights of owners from commercial encroachments, which led to the updating of our zoning ordinance. I represented the residents and employees and never forgot what hat I was wearing, the one that the residents voted me in to wear. This journey would not have been as so wonderful if it wasn't for the incredible staff, the employees that we have, and administration, the DPW, police, and fire. We are truly a blessed city. The friendships and relationships forged are rock solid, and I'm truly honored. Of the many accomplishments, one I am grateful to have played an integral part in is with the new DPW building, which was an essential needed service for our employees and our For years, there are many important essential services that I felt never made it to completion and very proud that this one did. From my first involvement to now, with over 12 years of volunteering and serving in this great community, I have been truly honored to have served everyone. When I first ran, it was to make a difference, and when I look at the election, I did make a difference, and I am humbled and honored for the support of the people of Rochester. My seat was filled with a fellow colleague from the Planning Commission, where I had previously sat in the past, and I would have been happy if David would have been there as well, because when you have the opportunity to build relationships and know how and know people have the best interests of a community and shared values, you will support them in their quest as well. So just to let you know, I will be running in the next election because it was, it showed me how much, how much the residents valued me there. And speaking of elections, I too want to give a shout out of appreciation and determination to our past Mayor Pro Tem Kim Russell and her husband Jeff for one of the most monumental grassroots efforts to save a community. A true public servant will do just as she did and with the help of many others succeeded. Looking ahead, I am excited to have had these chapters of my life and will continue making a difference as I've set many goals in my life and fulfilled these goals. And recently, I opened a real estate brokerage in Florida and will continue working there and here and be an active in legislative issues that affect private property rights in our community, and will bring them to you. And I must give the biggest thank you to my family for their love and support through the years. And for that, my apologies for being on Zoom, however grateful for this opportunity to work, as work took me out of town. Again, thank you for all your support, and I will see you again soon. Thank you. Ann Peterson.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. I can't hear anymore.
Oh. Councilmember Peterson, can you hear me? Can you hear us?
Yes.
OK, wonderful.
Yes.
I'm sorry you couldn't be here with us, but I want you to know that your message came through very clearly. You know, I'm sorry work took you away from us tonight, but I just wanted to thank you for your years of service here, and I know how much you love serving our community. So thank you so much, Ann.
Thank you, Nancy.
Councilmember Gould.
Hey, Ann, this is Doug Gould. I just also wanted to thank you for your years of service to the community. I learned quite an awful lot from you and have always admired your dedication and perseverance to what you believe in. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ann. I will have to, I'll be the first to admit, I didn't always agree with every position you took, but the one thing I truly appreciated was during the discussions we had on certain issues, you always gave me an opportunity to consider a different point of view. And I truly appreciate that because this would not be good if we all just voted 7-0 on everything. We need the ability to talk to each other and consider both sides of every issue, and you have been a champion of that, and I truly appreciate it, and we will miss you.
Councilmember Albert.
Thank you, Steve.
Hey, Ann, you're in one of my second favorite state, California, so I'm envious of you out there. My family lives out there, but I want to echo what Steve said. Today, we have a 154-page packet that we get ahead of time, and I could always depend on Ann that she read just about every single page. She was probably one of the most well-prepared councilmembers coming to these meetings, brought a contrarian viewpoint, which I really admired. I, you know, we may not have agreed on all the issues, but that's how democracy works, debate, collaboration, discussion. So thank you for your years of service, and I'm sorry you couldn't be here tonight.
Councilmember Trent.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, I wanted to thank you for your commitment and passion for the city of Rochester and being on council with you for a year. I saw a close-up how much you really care about this community, and I do appreciate that about you and some of the lessons that you taught me, and I thank you and I wish you the very best in the future in your endeavors in Florida and in your company.
Thank you, Mary.
And I'll finally say, Ann, I'm sorry you couldn't be here tonight. We do have beautiful plaque, beautiful flowers for you, but I've served with you on the Planning Commission, on the city council, so it's been a long time that we've served together. I know your passion and your hard work and that you care about the city. I think everybody knows that. And I also appreciate people who run for office. We all have a little bond up here, but you really have to put yourself out, and, you know, that's difficult, and sometimes it's good and sometimes it's bad, and you have to be prepared for that. And so I have the utmost respect for people who run for office, who put themselves out because our community needs people to do that for our democracy to work. So I thank you for that, and I will see you around town. So thank you, Ann.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you. All right, let's have one last hand for councilmember Peterson. All right, now it's on to councilmember Albrecht. Seems like I was just talking you into running there. Now it's four years later. So whereas Mark Albrecht was elected to the city council November 2019 and served till today, whereas Mr. Albrecht is a proud resident of Rochester and has been committed to making Rochester a great place to live, whereas Mr. Albrecht is dedicated to volunteer service and has used his leadership abilities to support various nonprofit boards in our community, whereas Mr. Albrecht has contributed his time and energy and passion to the city's boards and commission, including the DDA, which he was chairman of, Tree Committee, chairman of, RAR, Sister City Committee, Facilities Committee, Infrastructure Committee, and the Budget and Finance Committee, whereas the city of Rochester appreciates and respects Mr. Albrecht for his devotion and dedication to our great city. Now therefore, it is the city council who hereby expresses our sincere appreciation to Mark Albrecht for his years of service. Signed, 13th day of November, 2023. Congratulations. We'll have a picture. Can we Photoshop Ann in?
Someone can you take it?
Joanne, you guys, when you have a camera, Jeremy?
Jeremy's got it.
Jeremy's got it, yeah.
Those of you who know me know I don't script things. I like to just speak from the heart, but I'm going to break that rule tonight.
Can we speak first?
Oh, do...
Yeah, we can speak first.
You can do whatever you want. It's your last meeting.
Yeah, we had Mark.
Oh, OK, you guys go first. I thought...
No, Mark, you can go first. Yeah, Ann went first, and then we spoke after.
OK, I was following protocol. Come on, you've been sitting next to me for years. Don't turn on me tonight.
You, it's your night. You can do what you want.
God, he's been elbowing me during meetings, and now, no. Four years ago, I took the oath of office to be Rochester city councilmember from city clerk, LeAnn O'Connor, with my daughter Tiffany at my side and my granddaughter Riley holding the Bible that Mayor Pro Tem Salvia brought. This was my first introduction to being a public servant after serving as the chair of the DDA, as the mayor said. And my pledge to the voters, when I campaigned and handed out many of these, were three things, four things. Focus on our infrastructure, ensure responsible economic development, be fiscally responsible, and develop more green space. As the mayor said, I can't believe how fast the four years have gone by, which included working with city administration very efficiently during the pandemic, continuing to meet via Zoom or with adequate safety protocol in place to run the city. We never missed a beat. I was fortunate that Mayor Bixson appointed me to several committees that allowed me to fulfill my campaign promises. He didn't tell me that none of them paid any money, so, but it was OK.
I thought I did.
As a member of the Infrastructure Committee, we focused on our roads and water and sewer lines, using grant dollars to address our most pressing concerns, working with the DPW and the great people there. As a council, we carefully reviewed all plans for new development, ensured that whatever we approved provided a balance of economic development while honoring our historic roots. Probably the toughest job as a city councilperson is walking that line. I served on the Budget and Finance Committee, and we presented a balanced budget all four years with no increase in taxes. Thank you Finance Director Anthony Maggio, who's in the back of the room, and Deputy Finance Director and Treasurer Marcy Marywaki for providing, I always just call her Marcy because I can never do her last name, for providing the leadership and guidance we needed, and we always were looking ahead three years, something we did a few years back. So thank you for, I think the residents should be grateful for our financial integrity and how we plan our budget. One of my proudest moments was serving as chair of the newly-created Tree Committee, working with residents and fellow councilmembers to grow our tree canopy by planting 337 new trees in three years from Tree Committee funds and not any taxpayer dollars. And our resident forester, Nick Banda, was there to guide us. Along with that, I was able to serve with fellow councilmembers Marilyn Trent and Doug Gould on the Sister City Committee, along with three councilmembers from Rochester Hills, David Walker, Teresa Mangioli, and David Blair. We worked together to build a more collaborative partnership between our communities, including bringing back the Memorial Day Parade in 2022 to honor our fallen heroes. Very proud of the fact that that's back on the agenda. I also spent four years with the Rochester Avon Recreation Authority, or RAR, as their vice chair, and watched as we made much-needed improvements to the facility while continuing to provide programs and activities for the community while growing our reserve fund. Finally, my time on the Facilities Committee allowed us to look at the many buildings the city owns and make certain we are doing all we can to maintain and improve them. I made the decision not to run earlier this year based on the fact that I'll be downsizing my home of 20 years in Rochester, where I raised my two daughters Tiffany and Kayla, who's in the audience today. As an empty nester now, well, except for my little beagle buddy, I'll be looking for a much smaller home. I do not feel it would be in the best interest of the city and voters to run for reelection if I couldn't serve my full term if, in fact, I had been elected. While my next smaller home may be in Rochester, more than likely, it'll be in the surrounding communities. Wherever I end up, my love, passion, and dedication to all things Rochester will not change one iota. I'm honored to have served with my fellow councilmembers, Mayor Stuart Bixson, Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Salvia, councilmembers Marilyn Trent, Ann Peterson, Steve Sage, even though he elbows me all the time, and Doug Gould. While we didn't agree all the time, our respectful debates, and they were always respectful, interaction and collaboration made Rochester the great city it is today. Thank you also to an amazing city administration team, including city attorney Jeff Crot, my fellow Spartan up here. DDA, Kristy Tramaro, and her team of Jenna and Taylor. I am so grateful for the support of the residents that initially elected me and wish all the best to our new City Councilmembers Debbie Jones and Kristin Hauser, as they continue to represent the residents of this great City of Rochester. None of us get into public service for the money. We do it for the love of our city and the passion to make things better than when we found them. Thank you all, and God bless the City of Rochester and its residents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is this the roast part?
Yes, that's right.
To my neighbor, Adedias. I want to profoundly thank you for your service. It was your careful consideration of every issue ever presented to us and a very measured decision on every vote we had to take that I truly appreciate. I also sought your counsel many times on issues, and I'm very grateful for that as well. But I must tell you, to me, your legacy will be. So, for many years with our tree ordinance, we were struggling forever having someone come forward, and we had to play solemn in here amongst council on what we would do with the tree. And it was Mark's idea. Why don't we form a Tree Committee to help then corral all these issues, allow the residents to have a voice, present it then to council? And it made the process so much more efficient, and I applaud you, sir, for that. And I'm grateful for your leadership in being the first chairman of that committee, and those are going to be big shoes to fill going forward. So, thank you again. It's been a pleasure.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I want to express my gratitude for Councilman Albrecht's commitment to Rochester as a City Councilmember and acknowledging your invaluable contributions to the community during your tenure on the Board of Directors at the DDA, where I was with you there as well, so I just followed you here. Your unwavering presence and support at numerous events have left an indelible mark. Everywhere I go, you're there, and I know you've probably been to more. His decision, your decision not to pursue another term was undoubtedly a difficult one, but the impact of your work and commitment to Rochester will resonate far and wide. Your support that was extended to me beyond the City Council chambers to initiatives like the Rochester Pollinators, aware your endorsement, and personal action as planting your first pollinator garden in your subdivision, and hopefully there'll be more, was the beginning of a blossoming movement. And I know I will continue to see you at many events. I just saw you at Ra-Ra. You're so supportive. You, you know, you support the boards you're on and beyond, and the ribbon cuttings and everything. So, I know I'll see you at community gatherings, fundraisers, and all the events that we have every year, and here's to wishing you the very best in the future, and I know you'll be successful in any of your continuing endeavors, whatever you do.
Thanks, Marilyn.
Councilmember Gould.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank you, Mark, and congratulate you on your retirement, as it were. I've learned a lot from you. The first was when you smoked me in the election that I lost. Learned a lot of eating big slice of humble pie. I knew I was in bad shape when I went to Lupuma, and I saw your picture on the wall in there. I thought, who is this guy? And, yeah, I lost badly, but then I had the pleasure of getting to know you on a council, and I think the thing that I learned from you more than anything was, in order to enjoy this, in order to get a lot out of it, it's a volunteer gig, you have to do it with passion. You have to lead with passion, something you actually care about, and I've always admired that about you, the service on the Sister City Committee. And make no mistake, this man's the one that brought back the Memorial Day Parade. We were kind of watching while he did it, but you did that with passion, and I will respect you for years to come for that. So, congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you, Doug.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So, Mark, I think you have been taking lessons from Kristin Hauser, Councilmember-elect Hauser, because that was a very wonderful speech, very wonderful speech. So, I will just add to that wonderful speech to thank you for bringing your leadership, your strategy, and your professionalism to Rochester and our City Council. You know, specifically in the areas that have been mentioned, the Tree Committee, you know, I know you will continue to be the Lorax in the background in the City of Rochester, our Rochester 100 program, the Sister City Committee, specifically the Memorial Day Parade. And really, you brought your professional capacity, your 30-plus years of HR experience to our city through City Council, and so, thank you so very much, Mark. Thank you for all you've done and all you will do for the City of Rochester.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you, and I'll just say, thank you for your service to the city. I know you did a lot of good work with the DDA, and you ran that organization, which does take a lot of time. And then, I was one who suggested you run for City Council, and you did a great job. You campaigned all over the city, and I think you've done a really good job here, and you're always prepared, always have your comments, you've always done your homework, which is nice to see. And again, I'll say the same thing I said before, is I really respect, as Teddy Roosevelt said, somebody who gets in the arena and runs for office and fights for things and has ups and has downs, but continues to come back and fight. I really appreciate that, and a person, and I really appreciate that, and you, Mark, and I know, again, your passion for the city is great. You are everywhere around town, which is a positive. And it won't be the same, but I know we have to carry on, but we will miss you, and we will see you around town. Congratulations on your four years, and we'll see you around the corner.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, one last hand for Mark. I was told there's, no, I heard there is one less Spartan, though, on the City Council. One less Michigan State Spartan, so we have to think about that. Okay, so that's, our colleagues are leaving, and we will have a new City Council next time. We will have Councilmember-elect Jones and Councilmember-elect Hauser here to be sworn in, and then they will start next week, next meeting, which is the 27th. Next week is Lanyup, and then the next week is that. So, we're looking forward to that. Next, we have further public comment. Ms. Kane, come on up.
Hi, Patricia Kane, 817 West Fourth Street, Rochester. First of all, gonna miss you, Mark. I will miss Ann. Glad to see you here, Doug. Glad to see you here, Marilyn, and of course, we'll welcome the two newest members to City Council.
What about me? Aren't you happy to see us?
We're happy you're all here. You know, and what I'm going to work on this year is getting Ed's picture up at Lupuma, because I think he's the oldest working employee in the City of Rochester, even if it's another entity, like 57 years, so, you know. He deserves it.
That's cool. That's cool.
That's a lot of Lupuma.
Yeah. What I'd like to do, first of all, is, how can I say this? We're going to have to change some procedures and policy, and what I'd like to do in the next, probably right after the holidays or before, I'd like to be able to work with Nick on some of it that needs to be changed. What happened to me shouldn't have happened at all, and it was a very stressful situation and very uncalled for, okay? One thing I'd like City Council to know is, regardless if it's one resident, five residents, 13,000 residents, the obligation responsibilities, you represent every single one of us, and certainly, there should be care for every situation when someone has to reach out. I'm very glad that Nick and I have talked, and we're going to continue talking. He's my neighbor around the corner, and it's been rough on us, I think. And I want to thank, most of all, a calming person this last week, and that's Chief Ruhab. He spent time with me, talking and going over things, and I think at that time, in the whole midst of the storm. He turned out to be a bit of a calming force. Kristin Hauser's kind words tonight give me hope. Certainly, our attorney, Jeff, was very polite, very professional, but he's on a whole different end, and I think that we need to take more care with that. We also need to put in place a much better TNR program. It's hard to distinguish out there when it's a neighbor's cat. How do you tell the difference between a neighbor's cat and a community cat? You can't. And theirs and lies are one of our biggest problems. You also can't eradicate out of a city that was country and born on the farms and the mills, that has ponds and rivers, as we promote more green, more gardens, more pollinators, more certifications. You can't take an area and strip it of all of its warmth, natural, and nature. That would just leave us with concrete and hardscape, and that's not what we are about and never have been about. And I think we need to give that some serious thought. The ambiance of why many people are here or moved here, and of course, speaking as a resident who's lived here, what, 68 years now, I've watched the changes. It's very difficult when people come in and want to make us to what we are not. We saw that almost with the marijuana, and you can't just take everybody and say, we're going to be devoid of humanity, compassion, nature, natural, and green. If that's our case, then we really have to change a lot of things we are doing, and that would be very hurtful, and it doesn't leave much for people to relax and enjoy on their little properties or in this area. And we need to be proponents and advocates of that, very, very much so. What it was, oh, in all this mess, I ended up getting a cat. Her name is Butters, AKA Snickers, AKA Squeaks. She'll never be outside because that's not the place for cats to be, and we've been down that bridge before. She's about six months old, but when I picked her up off the streets by us, two pounds, and we couldn't even age her at the vet's office, and she got to the vet within 24 hours. I always do that. And she's doing much better now. She's healthy, she's got her spay date, but she is an orange little kitten, and I'm glad we could save one because we had several in the area dead and several cats dead. So, we do need to give more thought to what we're doing. So, Nick, I know I'll be in touch. I want to thank, again, Chief Ruhab. Do I have your attention back there? For his time and considerations. And again, one other thing, I just wanted to thank Kristin Hauser. Kristin did a lot of the legwork and investigation, which gave all of us residents the names, addresses, attorneys, the whole ballgame of how this happened. And I think that was probably some of the most valued information, was that scheme and how it works. It was laid out, though, with who the contacts were, where the companies are LLC, what they're doing, and where they're domiciled, and I think that was very important, and that wasn't, it took a lot. That was one of the most important, if you look on Facebooks, that came out, that we could forward, share, besides the general information. This was the in-depth that the people needed, and certainly, they spoke. Will marijuana come to Rochester? I don't know, but it's certainly not going to come now, and it's certainly not going to come on our main street. And again, I'm thankful for all those that worked, and I now know if I need a grassroots, I'm calling Jeff. He can start it with me, my dear friend. We will do it. But thank you, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, and happy holidays to you. Next, is there any, Brian, any other comments? Oh, Mr. Hauser.
Kristin Hauser, I just want to take a moment to thank Ann and thank Mark for their service, and I appreciate very much what you've done for the city. You do it not for the money or for, you know, the book deals at the end of your term. You do it because you have a genuine love for the city, and you do it because you want to make this place as great as it can be while you're here. So, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your service, and please, I hope that both of you continue to remain involved in the city, even though you may not be on City Council. You know, these meetings are always open to the public. We all have email addresses, so I hope that you continue to remain in touch and provide your input, provide your guidance, and be mentors for the new people on the City Council, who certainly will appreciate all the help and advice that you can give. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. It's a consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 9, 2023, October 23, 2023, and the special meeting of October 23, 2023. Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration request from the Rochester Goodfellows to have their annual paper sale, and next is a consideration request to approve Amendment 1 to the agreement for the local fiscal recovery fund distribution.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia. Support. Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, Nick. There is no old business or table items tonight. There's not a public hearing. There's not a legislative deliberation, but there are reports and regular business. First is consideration request to purchase 28 Point Blank Threat Level 11 Concealable Ballistic Vest with one carrier and soft trauma plate. Mr. Chief, that sounds like a necessary thing these days.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to let you know that all our police officers, our code enforcement officers, and our two bike officers are mandated to wear ballistic vests. Typically, the ballistic vests have a five-year shelf life. They're just about expired, so what we did is we brought in some vendors with different vests. The officers were allowed to try them on. The main thing is for durability and comfort, because I don't know if any of you ever wore a vest, but when it's 80 degrees outside and that vest is underneath your shirt, you're running around, it's very steamy, it's uncomfortable, but one of the important things is that they selected a vest that was comfortable, and a Level 2 vest will stop the ammunition that we carry, because most police officers are either injured or killed with their own duty weapon, so that was important. If we order the new vest, or when we order the new vest, it will take about eight to 10 weeks. All the officers will be custom fitted for this, and then the next round, I noticed we didn't get any money or grant funding for this this time around, but I'm going to be applying for a grant, so here on after, anyone that comes on the department will have some grant money, you know, to support that. The cheapest bid, which is a very popular company, CMP, the Point Blank Vest, that's a Level 2 vest, we need 28 of them for the 22 sworn and for our code enforcement and bike officers at a price of $20,972. That is a budgeted item that comes under the new equipment line item and the place budget.
Councilman.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Chief, I mean, we are always unanimous in our support to keeping our officers safe, and I just wanted to make sure, when you say the threat level two, this is the best you can, we want to make sure you have the best equipment at all times, so I just wanted to make sure we're getting the right equipment for the officers.
That will stop just about any handgun round, especially the 9-millimeter rounds that we carry.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase as presented for the vests in the amount of $20,972.
I will support, but have a follow-up question. Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Sage. Councilmember Sage. Chief, is there any way to repurpose the ones we have? Is that such a thing? I don't know.
Yes, we've done that in the past. Sometimes we donate them to the military. They would use them for the side of their vehicles if they're in combat, or we would donate them to the police academy. They would do some firing on the range with them just to show the cadets, you know, how the vests can stop around, so there's options.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Marilyn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, just a.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
It was okay.
Councilmember Trent.
Yeah, that follow-up question about, like, recycling, is that something that is done quite a bit, or is it?
It all depends, because sometimes, like, if we call the academy, they may not want them, but a lot of times, we use the, we save a few vests, because we do a lot of ride-alongs, and then if you do a ride-along, you have to have a vest on in the car, so those vests come in handy for that, so.
Okay, right, thank you.
Maryland.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, just a.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
It was okay.
Councilmember Chan.
Um, yeah, that follow-up question about, like, recycling, is that something that is done quite a bit, or is it?
It all depends, because sometimes, like.
Do you have a lot of extras, probably?
If we call the academy, they may not want them. But a lot of times, we use the, we save a few vests, because we do a lot of ride-alongs. And then if you do a ride-along, you have to have a vest on in the car. So those vests come in handy for that, so.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Councilmember Gould.
I'd like to applaud you from, uh, for your selection of companies here in the region in the state of Michigan.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next is consideration of an inter-local agreement for IT services provided by Oakland County. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, um, Anthony, you want to come up and take a run at this? It's the tech stuff that we give the county, and Anthony stays in close touch with these folks.
Happy to, hey, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Uh, this agreement is very standard with the county. Um, quite a few years ago, they started trying to consolidate all their separate agreements, getting things like the Clemis Agreement and the payments and everything kind of into one groups. So in this case, the IT Services Agreement. Uh, it's, it's been reviewed by Attorney Crot. Uh, we did remove a couple of things that we aren't using anymore. So this is just for the services that the city is using in partnership with Oakland County. Uh, so that's both a couple of items for the, the police, fire, and then as well as City Hall here for things like pay local taxes if you're making your payments online for taxes. That all runs through the county system. That's part of this agreement. So there, there's not necessarily any cost or anything with this. Uh, the fees for Clemis and all that, those are all laid out separately. Uh, this is just the agreement with the county to be able to continue partnering with them and utilizing the, uh, the services.
Good. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney Crot, for your review of this. So it looks like it was last reviewed in two thousand seventeen. Um, so I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Oakland County and the City of Rochester for continued IT services as presented.
Motion by, motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Gould. Discussion, Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next is consideration of recommendation from the Parking Advisory Committee for the purchase of a new parking deck gate system and installation of a fiber connection to the west parking deck. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So your Parking Advisory Committee and staff have spent a lot of time together on this. We know for all of you, uh, politically, and for the residents, this is a sensitive subject. Uh, we try to do our best on, and I thank Anthony and Marcy immensely for this, that, to get ahead of this, try to project what might happen. Thank Jason Dickinson. He's got an unbelievable good pulse on those structures. So remember, we are bigger than the structures. We have the structures of our surface lots. And Jason took it upon himself this past fall, we got a great price. We went sealed and crack sealed the surface lots to get us a few more years. It's not the end-all, but those lots can be upwards of three-quarters of a million dollars each. So we are doing our best to put our best foot forward. Alley's being redone. The meters, Chief Steve, before he left, led us through the replacement of the parking meters. You don't know in seven years that you're going to spend four hundred thousand dollars to replace the guts in these meters because two G now becomes five G. And Chief George inherited the next level here, which is the actual infrastructure inside the moving parts of the parking structure. Shout out to him. He dug into this thing. In six weeks, he could, a report, him and Anthony went and visited different products so they could tell us all at staff meeting what our best recommendation was. Then we got to the PAC meeting, laid it all out, realized we have short-term, immediate goals, short-term goals, long-term goals. So tonight, we are just talking about the immediate goals. We know rates are important. Pass rates are important. We had to worry about if the marijuana proposal had passed. We knew we were probably going to have to change the structure of how we timed parking because of that character of the transactions that would take place. So don't have to deal with that, so that's great. We bought us some time. But, um, he's going to go over his report, and tonight, we're just asking for the short-range goals, the immediate things that we need, and he's going to go over. So take a listen. I know all of you don't get to hear all the details that the PAC did, but we're here for you to talk about any questions you have. We can answer anything you need. So thorough work on his part, and Anthony, they did a great job putting this together that we could all understand, and I think the PAC was very appreciative of that also. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Banda. Well, hello again, Council. Well, when I came in here, I, uh, I knew nothing about parking, and it was one of my greatest weaknesses. However, I wasn't like Chief Steve. He had a PhD in parking. He did a great job. He taught me some stuff. But, uh, I bet you I have about two hundred hours invested in this. I learned a lot, and, uh, what I can tell you is I, I'm able to look at things. I can identify deficiencies and make recommendations for improvement. And overall, the parking system that we have now is, it's very good. However, there's some changes that need to be made. Times have changed, so we have to adapt to those changes. So I was instructed to do a, an overview of the entire auto parking program, and that's what I did. I submitted a very detailed report to our, our PAC committee. We had that meeting on October twenty-fourth of this year, and we focused on, I had several short-term goals and several long-term goals. However, again, as Mr. Banda stated, we're just going to focus on these three items tonight. Uh, we will discuss the long-term goals later on. We have other PAC meetings. However, these things need to be addressed. They're simple changes, but number one, uh, we talked about the purchasing of new parking gate system replacements in both structures. We have two structures, obviously, east and west. The technology in both those structures is six years old. It's, it's somewhat outdated. Uh, we talked about the adjustment of parking meter times and also to run a fiber line over to the west structure only for convenience purposes. The east structure would be too involved right now. So I'll go over all these real quick. In respect to the, the new technology in the structures, uh, there's nothing worse than waiting in line for somebody to shove a token in the machine, and it gets stuck and traffic's backed up. Right now, we're set up, uh, our, both our structures are set up for, um, they accept coins, currency, and credit cards. Most of these, if you go to cities like Birmingham or even Detroit, the coin system's gone along with the currency. I bet you ninety percent of our issues that we have at the structures, and we do have a lot of issues, is the jam machines from the coins, from the dollar bills, especially ten-dollar bills. For some reason, the ten-dollar bills get stuck, and from inserting tickets, from the fibers, from the paper getting stuck in there. Our officers spend probably a dozen, they're at the structures a dozen times per week, and we had fifty tickets open for traffic solutions to go down there and try to manage some of the issues that we had at the structures. What we want to do is go on a credit card-only system for the structures. And that seems, you know, some people may go, "Well, that, that doesn't make sense" when people like to put coins and stuff in there. But we did a study in the last year. Eighty-two percent of our patrons use a credit card in, in the structures. Now, we're talking meters, that's a different story, but structures, it's eighty-two percent. There's many moving parts in our system right now. If you open up that kiosk door, there's wires everywhere. All these new systems for these companies that we researched, they're all USB Quick Connects, very easy to manage, and, um, we can be taught to do the minor repairs so we don't have to call out, uh, service. They're all cloud-based. What's nice about these, with the new technology, again, there's no inserting coins or cash. There's a barcode code reader. When you pull in, there's a nice ten-inch kiosk. It's, it can be customized to the city. You just press this, or push the screen, your ticket comes out. When you come out, is all you do is wave your ticket in the bar scanner, and you're out, or put your credit card in or scan your credit card. So what that does is keeps the traffic moving. I don't know if you know, but each week, our parking enforcement officers have to go to these structures. They got to empty out their coins, empty out the dollars, replace the canisters. They have to go to the banks, stand in line, have the money deposited. And I'll be honest with you, there's really no means of auditing that money, uh, from the time it leaves that machine to the time it goes to the bank. Nobody really knows if money's missing. I'm not saying that no, anybody would steal it, but you just don't know. Uh, we don't want to be in the cash business, holding cash, managing cash. That's how bad things happen. Let's just go with the credit card only. Um, we can, again, we can be trained for the minor repairs. What's nice about the new technology is we can open the gates with our cell phone if an unauthorized unit, user. If there's an issue with the structure, with the gate, or with the technology, we can troubleshoot it on our cell phone. If the tickets get low, our, it will notify our cell phone. We can send an officer over there to replace the tickets. There's a number of custom programs that you, you can use, especially if you have, like, a certain, like, an event. Let's say one of our, let's say, for instance, the Roxy wants an event. We can discount parking by going into the software and adjusting that. And what's nice about the new technology, the intercom system, right now, if you go to the structure and you have a problem, you have to hit the help button. We can't speak to you until you hit the help button. So in most cases, somebody's there for an hour, and they have, they figured it out that they have to hit the help button, or a police officer has to go to the structure, you know, to instruct the people or find out what's going on. But this system, we can speak to them. They don't have to hit a help button. And when you do hit the help button, it goes on our non-emergency phone line, which doesn't make sense. Dispatcher could be on the phone on emergency call, and that phone could be ringing. They're obligated to pick it up, and now we're going to have a separate line just for the structure, so they know that that phone call can wait. What's nice, too, is with these new systems, with the parking passes, you can hold that parking pass like four or five feet away from that scanner, and it'll pick up your name on the scanner. And I noticed, too, um, what's happening is there's a few businesses where, you know, somebody may go out of the structure, and then they'll walk back in and, and keep scanning their card and letting all the, the people follow them out the gate. That's not, that can't happen. This is, uh, safe proof when it comes to that. So there's no more freebies in the structure. Um, I don't know, just for a little, um, little data, we had, last year, we had a hundred and seventy-seven thousand transactions in both structures. That's a lot of struck, that's a lot of transactions. And out of that, sixty-nine thousand fell under the one-hour free grace period. So most people, I shouldn't say most, it's pretty close, like fifty-five to forty-five, fifty-five percent of people park in the west structure. It's a little bit bigger, more centrally located. But, uh, all in all, um, myself and the team, we've, we went to a couple of these places. We looked, you know, this new technology. Again, they're, they're somewhat all the same technology. It just, it's amazing, um, the, what they've, it, it, this is all basically computer-driven, and that's what's nice about it. Like, the arms that go up and down, the ones that we have now are belt-driven. Um, the new ones will be like more gear-driven, and if you hit it, tap it with your car, it's not going to snap off. We can go and replace it, you know, very quickly. So just more advantageous for us. And again, this is about efficiency. It's about being user-friendly. And, um, again, this, the system we have now is six years old, and it's, it's time. It's, it's getting tired. Secondly, we'll talk about meter times. Um, what's nice about these meter times, we talked about this, there's no cost to make any adjustments. Right now, we have over seven hundred parking meters in the city, whether it's in a parking lot or in the street. There's seven hundred plus. The meter times are from nine AM to nine PM. That's when the enforcement starts. What I'm recommending is we up that to eleven AM to eleven PM. And what's that's going to do is the people that, some of the employees come in town here, they'll get little, a couple hours of free parking. There's people that frequent Rochester every morning. They may park in a lot, they'll have to pay. They want to get a cup of coffee or something, they won't have to pay. What we're trying to do is capture that night crowd, that bar crowd. They can pay for the parking. And what I would do is I would adjust the parking enforcement officers' hours where they're working to eleven o'clock at night, because, um, a lot of people just park whenever they want to park, or they just avoid the ticket. But I think by adjusting, uh, the, the enforcement officers' hours, that will help out a lot. Uh, right now, our price for the meter is a dollar twenty-five per hour. We will look at that later on. And, um, if we want to make the change, we have the contacts Civic Smart, and what they will do is they will, we need thirty days' notice to let them know to make the adjustment on the meters. But again, if you look at all the parking lots, it just says twelve-hour parking. It doesn't have a time, so it wouldn't cost us anything. But with that, just that slight change, we're looking, I think we're going to bring in anywhere between seventy and eighty thousand dollars in additional revenue with that slight change. And last but not least, this is the fiber optic line. This is Anthony's, uh, role. He, uh, he, he's requesting that we place the fiber optic in the west structure, or west deck. Since we're getting the new technology, it would be easier, it's an easier task to run the line in that, uh, structure. The east structure, it's a little bit more difficult. He can explain if you have any questions about that. And that's just going to enhance our communications ability and, uh, support other systems. So those are the three things. And again, we're just, uh, we're looking, again, being user-friendly, efficiency, and sustainability. Um, I don't know if the folks out there, they realize how much money it costs to operate, you know, the structures with all the technology we have with the meters and the batteries, the arms, the entrance gates, the exit gates, plus the lots. I mean, to pave one of those lots costs a fortune. And the goal is, is, you know, we're not going to, we're not looking at making a killing here. We're just looking at trying to recoup our costs to maintain the system the best we can for the residents and our visitors here. You know, like I said, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand transactions, you know, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of cars. And we don't want people getting out of the car and stepping into a pothole and breaking their ankle. We got to make certain that these, these lots are taken care of, and we should be putting money aside right now for new meters in the future. We should be putting new, uh, money away right now for even new, uh, technology we're talking about tonight, just a little bit each year, and making certain that at least one or two of these lots are fully paved each year. Because I don't know if you, if you've been to some of these lots, they're, they're in poor shape, and, um, and it's, it's millions of dollars to have them all repaired. But, um, but I think one thing I just want to explain, um, we did some short-term goals. I'd just like to let the citizens know right now. We did hire a part-time parking enforcement officer. He's doing a great job. Matter of fact, he wrote a hundred tickets the other night. Uh, that's a lot. And, um, the, the City Council, I don't know if everybody knows this, we increased our parking fees from ten dollars to forty to twenty to fifty. That starts January first of two thousand twenty-four. We're one of the lowest city when it came to fines. I think it's twenty dollars. Well, if you don't pay the fine in fourteen days, it goes to fifty. So just these little tweaks, we get new technology, we move the meter times, and we, we apply this new fiber line to the west deck. Just that alone, I will assure you, this parking system will be twice as good as we have now. Plus, there's a lot, we have a lot of other ideas. Again, we only have so much time tonight. Again, we only have so much time tonight, you know, we want to digest this first. But we do have some, like, I'll just, I'll just throw one of them out. We just, we want to kind of renumber the lots. If you go by a parking lot, one's number one, one's 16, one's 15, one's seven. We just want to have Main Street here and divide it, you have lot 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10. Simple as that, easy change because everyone's confused, even our officers don't know what the lots are. So just some, just little things like that for no cost, it just, it just enhances the program, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, just to add on, this is a little bit of audible, you guys, so don't throw anything at me. But first of all, if everybody put their money in the meter, we'd have zero tickets written. So we don't take pride in 100 per night. But every, the rumor got out that it doesn't seem like enforcement happens a lot after five. So all you have to do is put your money in the meter and it's zero. We, we would like to not have a parking enforcement officer, that, just for the record. So we're not here to write you a ticket. This isn't a money grab, this is please comply and it's zero. Second, a former employee who's very knowledgeable about this, we had a discussion over the weekend at a wedding. And, and we talked about the, we tried to be as politically correct as we could sliding this 12-hour window from 9:00 to 9:00 to 11:00 to 11:00. The comment was made, people are used to putting their money in there at 9:00 AM. We don't want this to be a money grab and they, we were trying to slide it so that we didn't have to say we extended it to 11 o'clock at night, we just shifted it. So if you want to consider leaving at 9:00 to 11:00, people are used to paying that right now. It's not, a lot of people here from 9:00 to 11:00, but we had talked about that internally and thought if you want to just slide the window, that's fine. But it's just a comment, if you wanted to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you, are you finished? No, I got a few more. We have to get into the bid. So I did the summary already. So the quotes, we went to three different companies. The lowest bid was Amano One Technology, it's called, it's, it's PSX, that's the company, it's Amano, they're out of Livonia, is 194,250. That's to equip both structures with entrance gates, exit gates and all new arms. That's insulation, training and shipping. They're going to give, they were going to give us a one-year warranty, now they're giving us two. It takes eight to 12 weeks to get the equipment. If we want a cash machine, it takes eight to 10 weeks and that's another 70,000. We don't recommend that. And what's nice about this company, they've been around, that's a technology we have now, but it's, it's new and improved technology. They're going to give us a $71,000 trade-in for our old equipment. The other companies weren't going to give us any kind of trade-in. And I thought that was nice because he really wants to get into Rochester in this area. And the other one was Traffic Solutions, they do our repair work on, on our system now, it's, they have TIBA technology. And honestly, that is a very good company also. Their, their service is phenomenal, I must say that. But, you know, their price came in at 283,000. And really, if you, if apples to apples, and Anthony was over there, he witnessed the Amano technology, and I think we both agree that it's a little bit more advanced technology, the software. So, and then you had Flash, they're, they got companies out of Chicago, they do a lot of work though, Chicago and Texas. You know, I, I don't know much about them, not many people knew about them, mainly it was the Amano and the, the TIBA technology. But overall, we thought that the Amano was, the price was right there, that's a great price because originally, when I started this, they were talking, this was going to cost over $400,000. You know, they were talking about having foot stations, but we're not really ready for, we're not set up for foot stations in the structures. It's just, you know, people would have to park their car and walk all the way across the structure in the winter and pay, it's just not set up for that. So this is the best way, I think Amano is the best, that's what PAC recommended, the price is right, very user-friendly equipment, it's equipment we can figure out and we can repair if we have to repair. These are the extended services agreements. The first two years are free, after then you get year three in here, it would be 14,618. The rep told me honestly, I would, he said, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even pay that because you're not going to really need it. There's really no moving parts to these machines. Again, when you open up the door, it's like, it's, there's nothing inside there except a roll of tickets and a little computer and a camera and an intercom, that's it. So that's something to consider, but we have two, two years to determine that. And these are just some pros and cons, you know, with the software and, you know, who's located where, just, you know, one of those, I just threw this in to throw it in. But, but bottom line is, there, it's all good technology, all three are good technology, solid businesses, all three. But we just felt that Amano offered the best product and I, I really liked the trade-in that came in handy. And again, the summary is, again, sustainability, efficiency, user-friendly, we want traffic to flow in and out, especially during events, we don't want people stuck. A lot of times, we'll get a phone call, someone shoved a quarter in the machine with gum on it. Now there's a line wrapped up, so what do we have to do? We have to go there, lift the arm up and everyone's just driving out, not paying. We don't need that anymore. I, I really do believe the changes, it's, it's going to make the, the program twice as good and it's going to get even better once we, we meet in the future with PAC, so. So with that, if there's any questions.
Councilmember Aubrey.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you may not have a PhD, but I think you've, you're up to a master's level at this point.
Big batch.
And, and, and knowing that, being on the infrastructure committee, we got a little preview of this and with Anthony partnering on this, I commend you on all the work, we work you've done and I like Nick's comments. We're not looking to make money on the parking fund. We, we really want people to just pay their fair share and not have to write any tickets if, if so be it. The only point I was making, you were talking about the adjustment of the parking meter times takes 30 days to notify whatever the company was. We're going into the holiday season, I was thinking, let's do this all January 1st, you know, I, I like things.
It's after, it's after the holidays.
Yeah, okay.
Not before.
Okay, okay, that, that was my only point, I, I didn't see that in the write-up, if I did, I might have missed it. But thank you for all the work you've done and, and I, I would, I'll let somebody else make the motion because there might be some other comments.
Councilmember Gould.
Thank you, Chief, for the report. And I, I haven't been here long enough to know the answer to this, but maybe Nick or Anthony or somebody does. This, this is a great report. How does it compare to what the projections were when these ramps were put into place? How long did we expect those arms to last? Six years? Doesn't seem like a long time, but I know tech moves fast. Were we expecting 177,000 people, more, less, you know?
Yes. The average, you know, from talking, and I've talked to a lot of people, directors of different cities that are in charge of parking and, you know, they have like some of the same systems we have, but usually this, this technology is five to seven years. And after seven years, you're pushing it. And again, I, I just think the coins, coins and cash, those, those days are gone. And we made it this far and it looks like we've done a pretty good job. But yeah, it's, it's just time to change and, but 177,000, when we ran that report, I was even surprised, being new here, that's just, that's a lot of cars going in and out, especially those arms going up and down, up and down. But yeah, so.
Is that what we expected?
Yes, I, Anthony, jump in if you want, but I would say that we never, we always said we did, just wanted to break even and we're right there, even through COVID, thank you DDA for the influx of money. So we're right about where we're at. I think the one that got us the most were the street meters. That was like $400,000, that came a little quicker than we thought. We always knew these would go that route, but the projection of the use, and we had to project how many percent of a 12-hour day where we actually get each meter. So now they can run the data on every single meter, every single hour. And we're, we're pretty darned close to what we thought. We thought we needed 100 and 150,000 a year over the bond debt payment and maintenance per year, build that up at the end of seven, eight, nine years, we knew we'd start doing some maintenance on the structures. What we didn't count on is the lots as much, everybody had a high tolerance for how crappy they are. And so that, that's a, those millions, literally millions to replace, weren't very well anticipated. So again, so we're trying to extend that leadership, the length of those, but the system itself, meters and the decks, pretty close to right on. So that's what I, Anthony, you agree?
Yeah, I agree with you.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I was at the budget committee meeting when this was being discussed and it was, I was impressed and I learned a lot too. So thank you. I do like the off-site, being off-site and being able to manage these with technology and your phone. I think that obviously saves a lot of labor, you coming, as people coming out in the middle of the night, or probably not in the middle of the night, but during evening hours or anytime, just running over there. So being able to manage that, I think is really a, a, a good part of this as well.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief George, thank you, Anthony. And I do know that you inherited a, a labor challenge with the parking system. I do recall Chief Steve commenting on it and have seen it firsthand, I'm a frequent parker in the parking system. Couple of quick questions. So the 194 for the gate system, is that the bottom line or do we also get, is that $71,000 less with the trade-in?
That is the bottom line. That's with the trade-in. And that, originally, he sent me a quote that didn't include the software, but I, I switched it around, I included the software, it's X amount of dollars per structure, so 194 is the bottom line.
Okay, thank you. So the parking meter time, I like the shift 11 to 11. My first thought was, you know, we really want to be a very senior-friendly community, right? Seniors tend to come out a little bit earlier sometimes so they can go in, sometimes they complain about the meters, so they would be able to just go in, do their business at the bank or whatever. So I think, I think that is a smart move, I support the 11 to 11. On the same topic, I am a little concerned about going to credit cards. I hear the technology improvement, I think we'll be able to work through it, you know, just like we all learned how to use QR codes during the pandemic to get our menus. But I do think we will hear from some seniors and it sounds like you have a plan for what, what do we do and I can't get the credit card to work. I mean, we know that happens on the parking meters today and so it will happen in the parking structures. So I just think we have to be ready for that. I do believe we have to continue to forecast, you know, our costs for this, what we need to do, our maintenance. And I didn't hear, you've got a lot of great data in here, but I didn't hear anything about usage, you know, compared to the past. And I do think our usage is picking up. So again, more volume covers the cost that we have for the structure. So overall, I think it's a great move in the right direction and I support the information that is presented. I can make a motion on this. So I'll make a motion to approve as presented, which is the 194, 250 for the purchase of the new parking gate system, the adjustment of the parking meter times to 11 to 11, that includes no change to the parking meter rates, the adding of fiber to the West Parking Deck at a cost of $50,817. Is that everything that you needed?
Yes, thank you.
Motion by Mayor, Mayor Protem Salvia.
I will support with clarification.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Councilmember Sage.
As presented, the timetable being February 1st of 2024.
January 1st, that's where the, yes, that would be the meter times and also that's when the fines will increase from 20, 20 to 50, 2050. Yes.
Gates are February.
Yeah, as soon as it comes in, now that we'll be able to get onto their schedule, then they'll be able to find exactly a hard date.
Yep. And another thing I didn't mention either, somebody asked how long does it take per deck, it's one week per deck to install. And we don't necessarily have to shut the entire deck down, we, we may have to put an attendant in there just for that week to, to assist, but we don't have to shut the deck down, but it will be, it'd take about a week.
Councilmember Sage.
I just need to clarify, just based on the information presented to us. So the fines increase January 1st, the fine enforcement, the short-term priorities, it shows a timetable of February 1st, or is that to be revised?
I put that in myself, it was just a goal of mine to get this accomplished by that date, but that can be adjusted. The, as soon as, if this technology is approved, obviously I'm going to contact the company tomorrow and I'll have solid dates when the technology can be delivered, whatever delivery date is and set up dates, something like that. And the meter times, that could be January 1st also. That could be January 1st with the fines. The technology, we don't know, it could be eight weeks, it could be nine weeks, it could be 10 weeks, it just depends on their schedule.
So I know the fines we already decided on.
Yes.
With that timing, so I guess I would offer it back to council, whether we want to do the adjusted meter times and that same cadence.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Peterson said she knows she can't vote, but she has her hand out during, as a citizen, she could talk about by it, but she just couldn't vote. So if you'd like to recognize her.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just wanted to let council know, first I wanted to thank Chief Rohab for this and let council know that I have actually, in my travels recently, encountered these systems and they are by far easier to deal with. And I think for Nancy's concern, I think you'll be happy with it, even though it, doing just credit card. It is very simple, very fast and very, very efficient. So if we can save money as a community, I think it's the best thing we've done in a long time for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gould.
I, I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to make sure that the motion and the 194 does not include the two-year warranty, is that correct?
That does not include it, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's something we can talk about two years from now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Further discussion?
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Aubreyk.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and Anthony. Just, you know, we'll talk about in the parking advisory report, there's some harder, harder decisions coming down the line on the new year for the parking committee and council, of course. Next, we have consideration request to schedule a public hearing regarding fiscal year 2024 CDBG funds. We're just setting a public hearing.
That's correct. Jeremy, Mr. Mayor's been working on this application. Again, we're looking to continue the work in the park on the paths, this case, and this stretch would be from parking lot number 10, which will be number 12 or 14 or 15, I'm not sure when we renamed them, but it's the one right by the, the main lot of the park by the bridge. So there's a dirt path that everybody walks on there now, not ADA compliant. This would get you past the butterfly gardens into the main park entrance. So we're going to focus on that area. So that would be what we're doing. But tonight, again, we are just asking to schedule that public hearing to get it ready to go for the November 27th meeting.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for November 27th for the CDBG application.
Support. Motion by Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Gould. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Aubreyk.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, next is a consideration request to set a public hearing for a special project and site plan approval for 333 East Third Street. This is a project that is next to the Rewald Headquarters building. It has passed through site plan approval from the Planning Commission. Now they are coming here today to give us a, the council a presentation. And then we will set a public hearing today for the next, is it the next meeting?
I know, December 12.
December 11th. Hearing. So welcome again.
Hi, thank you, I'm Chris Aller with AKA Architects. I've been working with Frank Rewald and the Planning Commission the last few months, refining and, and developing the project, which I hopefully will be able to show up on the screen here. Yes, so we're here to request a, a public hearing at the following meeting here for a new project. It's a building adjacent to the Frank Rewald and Son headquarters, just to the south of that, up against the, the Paint Creek. So as I move along here, this is a site plan for the project, just to give you some orientation. We have Water Street here in Third, down here on the bottom of the page, along with the Fire Department building here, Rochester Mills, the Rewald Headquarters, and then the new building here on the southeast side of the project. A lot of work's been, you know, gone into this project up to date, a lot of refinement of the overall goals. You know, I'll just give you some of the highlights of the project itself, I'm sure in the, in the public hearing, we'll get into more details. The building is located on the southeast corner of the, the site, and it was intentional, we took a look at where it could sit on the overall site. Initially, we thought it might want to sit on the west side of the property, thought that might be more of an urban context, more closer to the downtown. But as we looked at the overall site, that this walk up Third Street's kind of a steep hill, that's a small sidewalk, similar with the sidewalk in front of the Mills, it's, it's a small little sidewalk and no sidewalk on the other side of, of Water. We actually see, if we go to the next slide here, primarily, the primary pedestrian circulation is along the path north of the, the Mills, nice brick pavers, landscaped, it leads you down along the Paint Creek. So we actually wanted to locate the building to help improve and, and increase the pedestrian circulation, kind of capture that flow in front of the Rewald building, bring it in front of our new building. So we thought that the building engaged the pedestrian aspects of, of the city in this location better. This also allowed the building to be nestled up against the Paint Creek, similar to the Headquarters building. It allows us to tuck in a outdoor dining area on the north side of the, the building, which also exposes that to the, the, the Paint Creek as well, keeps it away from the busy street here along Water and, and Third, I'm sorry, Second and Third. So it was, overall, it was, it was just the, the right place to, to locate it. The building, as I mentioned, is, is two stories, 28,000 square feet total, so each floor is 14,000 square feet. The first floor will be a, which is what you're seeing here, which is a restaurant and then a market. So it's, the owners of the Rochester Mills are, will be operating this first floor with a restaurant and then more of a gourmet type market, it's not a grocery store or anything like that. The concept, I'm told, is, is similar to like an Italy type market. So we, it's not going to be a grocery store, high volume or anything like that. And then on the second floor will be an office tenant, so new employees here in, in downtown, downtown. That space has yet to be developed. We're working with them currently with figuring out exactly what they need in their space. This is a view from the northeast corner of the building. So, I guess your, your back would be up against the Mills building, and then the Headquarters, the Frank's Headquarters building would be off to the left. So, this is the main entry of the space, two-story building. We took, we wanted to take cues for the aesthetics of the building from the Mills itself, right? So, we wanted to keep a similar scale to the building, similar materials. We realized that the Mills is, is a, you know, 120-year-old building, so we're not trying to recopy, copy it, we're just kind of taking some cues from that, helping it to blend into the overall character of, of downtown itself. This is a closer view. You can see the, the entry once again here, and then off to the left, you see the outdoor dining area that tucks up onto the Paint Creek. And then, you can see this large walkway in front of the building, which helps that pedestrian flow coming from the north pathway. This is looking from Third Street here, looking up, you can see the, the Rewald Building as it currently sits, to give you some scale and perspective. Brickwork, a metal cornice on top, engaged pilasters, similar to the, to the Mills Building And then, this is directly south side of the building itself. We are improving the landscaping throughout the site. Along with the landscaping, it reminds me, we went through the, the sustainability report with the Planning Commission, so this building is, has been scored to be sustainable for the overall community, and that includes landscaping and a whole host of other requirements. And then, this is the, the finest, final image that I'll leave you with. This is from the southwest corner, so from the, the farmer's market corner. So, you can see here on the left is the Mills Building, the Rewald Headquarters, and then the new building that we're looking at tonight. We've provided a little pathway connecting the parking lot to the rest of the downtown here, with a little landscaped area and garden walls. So, you can kind of see the context, how it all fits in and blends together. We have, have the, the old, the slick modern, and then we have the, the new modern Class A office building here that we're looking at tonight. So, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I love architecture and design, and I think it's a good idea to have, and a good fit for the downtown, and it's a good use of the land next to, you know, the Rewald Headquarters, and I think you chose a good location. I love the idea that you're going to fulfill the need of a marketplace, and I respect the amount of time and skill that it takes, the size of project entails. And I think the use of the brick, you know, does echo the Victorian aesthetic and the pillars that you've added to kind of give some, a little bit of depth or interest on the side of the building. And the roof line does connect with the Rewald Building. What I have, though, as a concern, is that I don't think the first floor looks like a marketplace or a restaurant, and I wondered what the thinking was behind that, because I've seen a lot of the work that the, the Rewald family and Rewald and Son has done with the, at the Royal Park, what they did at the knitting mills, the iron work that they even added to the knitting mills. And I, when I look at this, I see an office building, and I just wonder if there's anything that was the discussion of that choice.
Yes, we, we did take a look at that and discuss. I'll show another view of, a little more close up. Let's see if I can. All right, there we go. That's a little bit better view of, of that, that front elevation. Most of the glass for the, the restaurant and the market is, is more on the north side here.
It's hidden, right? It's on the, I get the challenge. I understand.
Yeah, more opening up to the north, and then on the backside, and on the Paint Creek itself. We are providing a lot of glass at the entryway to, making that front door obvious for all the folks there. You know, we're leaving some flexibility in the building itself, that if it's not a market 10, 20, 30 years from now, we do have some flexibility with what the building will look like in the future.
Well, I mean, even if it was an office building, there still is some kind of more, maybe something a wow, or something that like, wow, this is, this is really a cool-looking building, and that is my concern. I mean, there's stonework. I, I see that, you know, you've, you've, you know, you opted out of, and I understand it's expensive to do the, you know, the brickwork, the Victorian brickwork is, you have to hire brick, bricklayers, you know, that know what they're doing to add that. I, I, I just thought, you know, maybe some ironwork entrance, some, something that could make me think that that's a marketplace, and not need to explain to people that it doesn't look like a marketplace, but there really is a marketplace and a restaurant in there. And I, I think that that can be a challenge and an impediment to, I come, I'm also, I have a marketing company, and when you're trying to sell something, the, the aesthetics of the building is a big factor. I mean, unfortunately, you're, you, you've got this, the best view is on the other side, is on the Paint Creek side, and I don't know what that view looks like. But when you're driving down the road, you've got this big parking lot, which is a challenge. A lot of people, I know you had to change, you had to decide, you want, usually have the parking lot behind, so you've got this vast space, of which I see that you're going to add some islands and trees and, 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 you know, natural elements to try to, try to fix that. And I know anything will be in an improvement. I know that this has been a, a long-time dream and history of, of the Rewalds working in this building, buildings in that whole, in that section of town.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject, so, so very good and valid point. So, when we started this with the Rewald Group, it, it was going to replicate the Headquarters, more modern, a little flashier, some kind of market. And then, we were reminded that the Mills is a very successful, large restaurant, and you can't tell it's a restaurant until you go through the front doors, right? So, Planning Commission struggled with which way to go. So, either you're going to respect the Mills and try to tie it all together, and leave the Rewald Headquarters as the unique piece in this parcel, or throw the baby out with the bathwater, and then make this a modern building, and, and jazz it up. So, it went back and forth probably four or five times, I think, which way we were headed. So, the Planning Commission ended up settling after a lot of detailed discussion on that, but the amount of windows and the light that would get in there, and then the activity, those are garage doors on the, the side, even though you won't see them from Second Street, those can roll up, I believe. Yep, so that, that will show like the market and the restaurant, et cetera. So, you're right, Mayor, it was tough to balance those two things, but Planning Commission ended up kind of pushing them this way, instead of going for the flash. If that helps at all.
It does help. All I'm saying is that there is, it wasn't even flash at the knitting mills so much. It was this, you got it, there's a patio, there's an ironwork, there's an entrance, there's something that's, to me, you're not asking for something, a large change, it's just something that leads you in to it, that makes you want to go into it. And I, sorry, I, I have people critique my stuff all the time. So, I'm used to it. They get up in the morning just to critique, critique my stuff, and then they call me at lunch and dinner, and they get on me on the next day. So, I live your life in its smaller microcosm. So, I, it was hard for me to, to bring this up. It just, it, I, I, you know, that's, that's my opinion.
We appreciate your, your.
I think that.
Further comments from council? Is there a motion? Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, obviously, I've seen this many times on Planning Commission so far. So, the part I always struggle with on a special project is there's always an offering to contribute to the greater good to, to the city in, in consideration of the special project. And I've actually seen, and there still are, special projects where those commitments were never fulfilled. So, when it's mentioned that the project owner will contribute towards the cost of improving Rochester Lions Park, okay, I can read the sentence. I've never been presented with anything. What does that mean? I know where it's at, but what does that entail? And why was it never presented? I guess I just struggle with those things, particularly because there are special projects in this town today that have never fulfilled that promise.
Right, Mr. Mayor, yeah, fair question again. So, we're working with the Lions to try to see if it's still their park, and they wanted to come up with some money, and Mr. Rewald himself, I think your balcony, Frank, looks down there. So, every day, he reminds me of why doesn't somebody do something there? So, I think we're talking about a pergola, landscaping, electricity, use the white gazebo, upgrade that a little bit, but we haven't got a commitment from the Lions, what they would like to see there also. So, what we did on, and I think I know what you're talking about, Elizabeth Park, the Rewalds for the condos, agreed to put in the sidewalks. The Sherry agreed to put in the water wall. We didn't have a dollar figure to that, because, Attorney Crut, we don't put a dollar figure to it, it's the project, like you're saying, so. And then, now look at Elizabeth Park, we don't want the water wall, we don't want those paths, we're going to redo it again, but the commitment is still there in writing as a special project, that we will use whatever the cost of those sidewalks were to upgrade Elizabeth Park. So, here, we don't have a final answer yet, but it looks like a gazebo, pergola over the top of it for shade, electricity to get out there so we can actually have performing arts, artists down there, and then open up the, the view to the river. We already mounted DEQ to see, we can't strip the bank, but we can open it up. So, that's the best we can probably do at this point.
And I can take that on face value.
Right.
Okay, so let's count the years.
Right.
On the Elizabeth Park commitment.
Right.
How many is it now?
Probably five.
Over 10.
Well, no, it was the, it wasn't the Reginald Headquarters, it was for the tower.
Okay.
But still, five years.
So, I guess.
Yeah, I understand.
If I approve this tonight, I know it's kind of, maybe.
We're setting a public hearing tonight.
So, hear you loud and clear, we will define it, put it into a scope of work by the public hearing. That gives us three weeks to do that, so.
Great.
I think that's a fair comment.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. So, speaking of special project, I did read in the package that there's just one setback, which causes it to require a special project. Can you show us and the public what, where, where that looks like on the diagrams?
There's a setback, but then there's also a, a use, it's zoned I right now, so the, we are, our use doesn't fit with that I. So, there's two reasons why the, the special project. And the setback, I believe, was the, I don't know if I, if it's shown clearly.
Because right now, you're not allowed to have a restaurant or a.
Correct.
So, from a zoning standpoint.
Yeah, correct. And then, I believe it was the south property line was one of the setbacks, but I'm not sure.
Okay, so along the parking.
Yes, correct. We're not, we're not getting too close to the Paint Creek by any means, and obviously from the, the west property line.
Okay, and, and there still is a sidewalk along there, so a sidewalk, a green belt, and then parking.
Industrial has a way larger front yard setback, and technically, that's what we had to call that. So, if this was zoned office, it would be 15 feet, not 60 feet, so.
Okay, understand. And, and we love our parking in downtown Rochester, so, thank you. And I, I do love the concept of the market. I think it's going to be very popular. Can't wait to see what it is. And I would like to make a motion to set the public hearing for this project for December 11th at the, at that city council meeting.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Support. Support by Councilmember Sage to set the public hearing. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Mr. Rewald, welcome.
Hi, Frank Rewald. Good to see everybody. Just some good questions. I didn't take that personal, we get it all the time, but just so you know, we've worked really, really hard on this project, it's taken a long time, and right now, to do an office anywhere is very, very challenging. To get financing is even worse. So, this, this project is very difficult to get through right now. We've struggled with, and that was another good question, Councilman Sage, and Nick and I, he can vouch for this, we've gone back and forth on how to best spend this money downtown. Believe me, there is nobody in town that wants this to look better than we do. Trust me on that. We took a lot of, you know, flack when we did the hotel back in the day, and people didn't want it, and you look at that now, it's probably the best thing that's ever happened to Rochester, as far as people in town, spending money, going to restaurants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we had a vision on this area, this is going to be the icing on the cake. Personally, and I've told Nick this, I think it's a waste of money, that's part of the reason we haven't done it, to do the park way over off the beaten path. I've always wanted to put the money into the Lions Park, we've talked about that. Part of what we changed, again, you gotta understand, we're working with moving pieces, because at one point, the front porch was going in. That kind of changed what we were going to do, big time, right across the street. So, we, we changed that a little bit, paused. I still think it's better, and you can just think about this, and I've said this again from day one, that we pool this money of these different projects, either from other developers, and do something really cool down there. We can make that Lions Park something really special.
I like that.
So, let's not rush to do a sidewalk where no one's going to use it, in my opinion. Put the money over where people are going to use it. That's going to be the focal point of town between the hotel, the mill building, our buildings, you walk a block into town, it's going to be cool. We've got a lot of parking there, which is a good thing. I know we've had debates on parking, because you want the decks to be used, but you got to have parking for buildings to succeed, you just have to. You know, you, you can't not have a place for people to park, so. And, and, and both the owners going in this building want to be on the river, right? That's one of the reasons we moved it there. If you come to our building and walk out there and look over the river, it's just super, super cool. You know, you can hear it, you can feel it, you can smell it. That's what they want. So, a lot of good questions, there's reasons we did that. We've got really good tenants coming in. Office for the city is going to be really good. We need office, you know, we're, we're short of it, we need people downtown spending money during the day and doing things. There's a lot of thought put into that, and we hope the market's going to be successful, you know, the, the mill building is. And the only other thing, just to refresh people's memory, when we bought the mill building back in the day, it was going to be demolished, and they were going to put aluminum-clad apartments in there with no parking, it's probably before most of your times, but Bill Metzlfield and my dad really stopped that and got in there. And that mill building, for, I'm sure people know, it's a national historic registered building, that's not easy to do. It was not that way when we bought it. So, have a little faith in what we're going to do, it's not our first rodeo.
I understand.
Thank you.
I'd like to, Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I think you picked a great location to put it next to the river. I, there's, we have a lot of buildings and, or parking lots next to the river, so that was good. But I would like to confirm and applaud you for wanting to do something wonderful and unique and innovative at the Lions Park. I think that the city can use some of that, and more of that, and I think that things are changing in, in our city, and, and I think that people get very excited when they see something new and unique. So, I hope that, you know, maybe we can get past the gazebo. Thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, we.
We already did.
We've already, yeah, we've already voted on that.
We voted.
To set the public hearing.
Set the public hearing, we had a motion.
Yes, and, and a vote.
And a vote, then Mr. Rewald asked.
Oh, you're right. Yep, and then it got into another conversation.
There you go.
Do we have to come back here again?
No.
Yes, sir. See you the 11th.
I spaced that. Frank was so compelling, I spaced it.
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, I know Mr. Hauser was on the Planning Commission, but make sure that Ms. Jones gets all the stuff.
Pretty drunk.
Oh, oh, good, thank you. Okay, next is consideration request to set up public hearing for the 2023 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Mr. City Manager?
Yep, same thing. Jeremy and Alec have been taking the reins on this, and we're getting great community involvement. Comments are still coming back, so the final step now will be have the public hearing on December 11th. That'll allow us to take that information, if we get new information at that meeting, That'll allow us to take that information, if we get new information at that meeting, meld it into the plan, still get it to the state in time to meet our February 1 deadline. So we're asking to set that public hearing for December 11th.
Motion?
Motion to set the public hearing for the Parks Master Plan on December 11th.
I support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Trent. Councilmember, do you have a question, Councilmember Trent?
No, I was, it was a two-up. It was yes. I love that.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Nixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we also have a receipt of the check register if there's any questions. Then on to receive report from the various boards and commissions. First is a report from the Parking Advisory Committee. Mr. Sage, I think we've kind of covered it.
I think we have, but I did want to mention that in our January meeting, we have some considerations, one of those being additional EV charging stations, we will discuss, some long-term capital improvement opportunities, we'll consider those. And then maybe something on the miscellaneous side in, like, consider if the marijuana dispensary balance had passed, what would we do in, in, in that case with regards to the parking rate? Or if there's a special event in town at some point, do we adjust the rates? So there are other considerations, nothing we have to rush into or anything, but we want to at least put those on the table. And something someone else mentioned here earlier in the parking discussion, we always have to channel funds into that parking fund because the things we approved tonight were already contained within that fund because we had put money away. So we need to continue that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and remember, every time we do a parking in lieu, that, all that money goes right into the parking fund. So it's $1,000 in space, but we've added probably $20,000. So that, that's a good thing, too. So keep that in the back of your mind.
Very good. Next is a report from the Historical Commission. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Happy to report. One DOR book was sold last month. And again, I mentioned that this is one of the best holiday gifts currently out there. We also sold one of the historic home plaques. Now, that's notable because we have partnered with the Rochester Hills Museum at Van Huisen Farm. We're going to do a joint collaborative project to have a historic home banner available for persons' homes that are celebrating milestone anniversaries. So there'll be some more information to come from that. It's not finalized yet, but I wanted to just give a preview.
Very good, thank you. Next is a report from the Infrastructure Committee. Mayor Protem Salvia.
I'll take it. And Councilmember Albrecht, if you want to chime in, you're welcome. So this meeting was held October 27th. It was basically a project wrap-up from the summer projects and a planning for what we are going to do next for infrastructure. So we talked about DWSRF, storm and sanitary sewer, mill and fill update for council. Good to know that Hutch, which was a new contractor, was well-received in our city, did good work. curb and gutter replacement update regarding the east side. This was a big disappointment that we were not able to do our curb and gutter replacement. This had to do with the contractor who quoted straight linear footage and not the detailed process of a shorter three-foot sections to replace. So we will have more discussion on how to do that next year. We spent a long time reviewing the engineering report regarding bridge maintenance. Really detailed report of every bridge in the city, both pedestrian as well as vehicle for road bridges. And we will see some estimated construction and repair costs coming to us, a total of $190,000 for the bridges and $185 for pedestrians. Bad news on DWSRF. We submitted for funding for that. This is the, the Main Street project. When Oakland County does their work in 2026, we know we have about $3 million worth of cost for our water system there and we were denied. So we are going to keep applying for grants, but grants, low funding costs or low funding options, but that is a big project. We also talked about the hydrant flow testing model, working with NACWA. So in the next meeting in December, we'll have some more information on that. Stormwater projects, again, we applied for a FEMA grant for some work there for stormwater. I think that's it. Covered a lot.
Very exciting.
Eight bucks.
Next is a report from the Tree Committee. We will go to Councilmember Albrecht for that.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our meeting on November 2nd. We had invited Rachel Williams from the City Beautiful Chair, because we partner a lot with City Beautiful, and Colin Pettit from our DWSF Park staff was also there, and he's become a regular member. One of the things that came up, we had a couple issues that had come up. One was the historic camper-down elm tree that was removed from what was the 210 West University, which I didn't know until this meeting, was the side of the old library building. A lot of emails and calls came in and so the two, the owner of 210 West University, Debbie Miseman, and her property manager, Jamie Pinko, came in. They shared with us pictures of the tree that was removed, which basically the tree was going to come down in a strong wind at some point in time. Nick said it probably could have lasted a little bit longer, but it was hollowed out trunks and everything. So we, we asked them to work with Nick and Bill Thomas, one of our, an architect on, on the Tree Committee, to, getting a camper-down elm tree is very hard to do if, if, if anything. So we, we agreed that they would get a bev oak tree with at least a three-inch trunk planted within a year to replace that tree to create the same ambiance that was there before. The motion was made, supported and unanimously approved. Our tree fund has $51,500 in it, of which $20,700 is available. Why is the other part not available? Because people have a year to replant trees in lieu of the money. The person is probably not going to replant the trees, so at some point next year in the spring, we'll have that money available. The tree bait program, which we started, we had four residents utilize the program this year versus three last year. We will, in our third year of Rochester 100, we didn't hit the Rochester 100. We just, we ran out of spaces to plant trees, but we will have 77 trees planted this year in 2023. And if you add in 2021, 142 trees, 2022, 118 trees, and the 77 trees, 24 have already been planted, 53 are being planted as we speak, we'll have planted 337 trees in this three-year period. So I'm going to use the statistic and say we've averaged more than 100 trees. That's, I'm going out with that, so that's it.
Yeah, that's great.
Then we have Rachel Williams and Colin give an update on the tree mural. We're going to put four four-by-eight panels on the back of the Kiwanis Shelter. They're going to work with some artists. We gave it to the City Beautiful Commission. They're better at this than we are. They've done it before. We did say that we would provide financial support, not to exceed $2,250 from the Tree Committee, if the murals had trees in them. If they decide to go something else, no money. So, but no, it'll be, it'll be a natural-looking kind of thing. And then the last one was silver maples. 100 years ago, the members of the Historic Tree Committee back 100 years ago planted a lot of silver maples on the east side of town. Those have become dangerous. They're basically have a lifespan of 100 years and we've had residents asking to have them come down and taking them down. And nobody wants to see a historic beautiful tree come down, but these trees will fall on garages, streets, or people. So we talked about that and said, let's come up with another program, which will be done by whoever replaces me. But Nick's sort of queued it up where we will incent from the Tree Committee, people to, when a tree, silver maple comes down, we will help them in some way, shape, manner, form, to be determined to plant another tree so that 100 years from now, whatever tree we were planting now will replace those silver maples that have come down. So, and then last thing, you know, this is my last Tree Committee and, and again, I'm passionate about this and, and I talked to Mayor Protem and, you know, when this next city council is, I, I, this was an ad hoc committee that we created three years ago. I hope that the city council will continue the Tree Committee and, and the good work that the people have done on that. So, you know, that was just my request before I go. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you for all those reports, all their work. Next is a report from the OPC. Mayor Protem Salvia.
I have that one. OPC Board met November 9th. All the amazing, successful events that happened in September, October, November. An impact report will be going out the end of November to all 27,050-plus households in the three communities, so look for that. We spent a good amount of time talking about transportation. If you may remember that when the millage passed, OPC received $2 million. They're going in for the next budget year for $2.6 million, so an increase because OPC has been noted by Oakland County as the low-cost per rider provider of transportation amongst the other transportation services currently using Oakland County dollars. So MODA and WODA. Don't ask me what those acronyms mean. I don't know. So as well as we have a 48% increase in riders, that's as of September 30th. So lots of good transportation taking place through the OPC. Talked about fall activities, the artisan market, facilities improvements, things that were done in 2023, the plan for 2024. And lastly, I'll mention that they have seen an uptick in membership. They stated 40%. I'm not sure if that's month over month or what that is, but due to people saying they're so happy with the rebranding and they want to go to the place that it's the OPC, not the senior center. That is my report.
Not a senior center.
OPC, a great place to be, best place to be, best place to be, 50-plus.
Next, we have a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Gould.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on November 8th. One of the things that was accomplished is, I believe it's official, but Janine Krupp is taking over as chair of the committee starting next year.
That's right.
Okay, and a couple other items I would share. We had a guest, a woman, Adam King, who has been there before, is still interested in putting a plaque in Rochester Park for Wayne and Eileen Andrews and came up with a pretty good arrangement, I think, where the city would put a tree in there. Ms. King would, and her group would buy a plaque, and they have a fair budget, so beyond the plaque, they would donate the rest of the money that they were going to, you know, do a memorial or a garden or something to the Butterfly Fund. So I thought that was a nice thing with everybody working together to come out with a good outcome. We had a report from Rochester Pollinators, from Councilmember Trent. They're still working on the Southern Wet Meadows Enhancement Project. They got a $1,000 grant to put in seeds in there. Let's see, what else do I want to share with you? Implemented all 24 actions or 24 actions to make us a butterfly city again going forward.
Our champion city, right?
So, wow, incredible work. There is a seed cleaning and packing day to be held on November 29th at Dinosaur Hill. Exactly sure what that means, but I think you collect seeds and, you know, clean them up and share them, but it sounds great. There is a Holiday Expo on November 13th at the Royal Park. This is of.
It was tonight? Yep, that was tonight. It happened.
It was today. It was great.
It was great.
Glad that happened. We talked a little bit about the murals at the Kiwanis Shelter as well, and the, the Pollinators received the Community Foundation grant, $1,000 for that as well. Just a couple other really quick things. We did talk about some still ongoing discussions about Elizabeth Park. One of the things I kind of liked that the City Beautiful is considering is trying to add some level of consistency from park to park and place to place, so you have sort of developed more of a Rochester feel as you're moving around the community to different parks and different places. Talked a little bit about some landscaping by the elevator after it's done with some native plants. And the last thing I'll mention, I learned a lot about the names of the bridges in town and there's, does everybody know what Watertown is? Watertown is the space adjacent to and under the South Bridge. The South Bridge being the bridge on the south of town. And there's, there's a space under there, not really allowed to build anything, but the, the plan is to, is to put a gazebo by there, maybe, you know, some benches and just make it a really nice little park area down there, and that is called Watertown.
It is.
Good.
Is that where we were going to originally move the barn or one proposal?
Possibly.
Yeah. Close.
I don't want to correct you, but it's just a little tweaking on a couple of statements. I made a mistake that Jean, Janine Krupp is going, she said she wanted to be.
We'll vote in January.
Yeah, we're going to vote next time. And then the Community Foundation gave or granted the City Beautiful Commission $1,000 from their Community Enhancement Fund for the mural.
Gotcha.
And they, yeah, that was, it was a little confusing. And, yeah, so we thank them for that. They thank them for that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment tonight? Brian, anybody?
Thank you. So it looks like Councilperson Peterson has their hand raised.
Okay, Councilmember Peterson.
Hi, everyone. I just want to take a moment and say thank you to all of you. It's been a great time and I really look forward to seeing you in the future. I do like all the presentations that were tonight and I'm looking forward to seeing the rewall project and how that will enhance that area. And just overall, thank you all for all your service as well, and I'll see you soon.
Very good. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Yep, thank you for joining us.
Any further public comment on to miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple things here. First of all, congratulations to our city clerk, Leanne O'Connor, Deputy Clerk Brian Denonzo, and their, all the volunteers. Great election. They worked so many hours with the early voting and we should be very proud. I, I know for a fact, I've heard the conversation, she didn't know, I heard other clerks calling like, wow, how'd you do that? They came here even to see how it all worked out. So she and Brian, what a great team. There was a lot of stuff going on. They really kept their calm. This place was, there wasn't a complaint. We had good parking. Everybody was treated with respect and everybody respected the process. So I thought that was totally outstanding. So I want to congratulate them. I want to congratulate.
A lot of applause for.
Absolutely. I'd like to congratulate Madam Trent, Mr. Gould, Christian Mr. Hauser, and Ms. Jones. David Birltich, you ran a very fair and, and you worked hard at running for this and I think it's great when people get involved. I think you heard the speech before about that's, we have to grow our next set of leaders. So I respect you for what you did and appreciate that you're here even continuing to educate yourself. That's great. We talked about today at the Royal Park, Christie and I started that project. It was supposed to be business to business about seven years ago. It was just businesses were supposed to go in the Royal Park and talk to each other, say, you know who your fellow people are in town. There were 1,000 people there tonight.
It was a madhouse.
And it's, people are happy and there's conversations going out, the service industry, not just people retailing. So it's, it's awesome. Friday night is Festival of Trees Cocktail Party. I think you are all obviously invited. And then the event takes place for the, the weekend. I saw a preview of the trees. Every year, somehow those ladies and her group, I don't know how they top themselves, but there's 37 seven-foot trees, I think. It's insane. The Community House would be a great place for everybody to do that. And I think that's it.
Very good. Madam Clerk, anything going on?
No, not anymore. On to the next one.
Mr. City Attorney.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, yeah, kind of pile on what everybody said. Congratulations to, to Marilyn. Excellent race. Did a great job. You were everywhere all the time. I don't know how you do it. Congratulations to Christian and Debbie. Uh, congratulations to, uh, Christian and Debbie, I know they, they stepped out, but I'm looking forward to working with them. And, uh, David, it's been a real pleasure, and I'm really happy to see you here as well, so, uh, really, really great, uh, very, very honored to be up here again, so thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Um, I just really wanted to, um, kind of echo the thoughts on early voting. I heard from some of the volunteers, they were even questioning, is this going to be good? Do we really need early voting? But I heard so many great stories, families came in and voted together, people with special needs were able to vote, so, just, again, great job, and I think that was really so successful for, for the city of Rochester. Um, and again, want to congratulate all of the, the council members-elect, Hauser and Jones, Councilmember Doug, congrats, you're back on, Councilmember Trent, you're back on, so, I think we're going to have a, a great year working together. And then, one, I'll say, lesson learned, thinking back on the election is, um, and I remember Steve Zoke saying this, hey, uh, city of Rochester, why do you have a sign ordinance if you can't enforce it? So, I do think we need to have some study or some thoughts around our sign ordinance, and how do we enforce sign ordinance violators, where if people understand and they pick up their signs, but when we have a problem, I, I just don't see the mechanisms.
So, and, and I, we had talked about that a bit, and turn around, you can jump if you want, but, we know the rules, we know how to follow them, the rules are, and we did, so, all you can do, in this case, and there, there's no such thing anymore, and the, I think a lot of folks remember when we had political signs and a separate ordinance, when the state changed that. So, now, they became temporary signs, so, unfortunately, it's, we go out and say, your sign's too big, and then we give them a day to take it down, they don't, then we come back and give them a citation, they have 10 days to take it down. They don't take it down, then they're issued a citation, then we have to go to court, and the judge decides. So, unfortunately, our hands are so tied, which I can't even understand, why there shouldn't be a separate group of signs for an election day. I agree, it was very frustrating to all of us, but we did follow procedure, tied, got a ticket, they, and, uh, we got to court on the Yuwan Moon River, and they took it down that morning. So, then we can go, Jeff could go to court and say, they took it down, it's up to the judge, you could still find them, or say, oh, thank you for taking it down, but tied, it's going to have to pay whatever it, it is. So, there are the two that we got complaints on. I will say, they did not complain on the yellow signs, there were many yellow signs that were over six square feet. So, we didn't run around chasing them.
That's different, though.
That's, yeah. So, but we-
Just kidding.
-complaint-driven, but, if there's any way we can tighten that up, absolutely, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
See it Festival of the Trees. In, in my neighborhood, just so you know, the guys are threatening to say the wives are not allowed to go, because everyone buys trees in my neighborhood.
That sounds fair.
Councilmember Sage?
I also want to congratulate Councilmember Gould and Councilmember Trent, uh, on your reelection, and I look forward to serving with you again.
Councilmember Albrecht? I think I said everything I needed to say, but I, I do want to pile on, again, everybody ran a great campaign, and, um, David, I hope you come back, uh, in two years, I think you learned a lot dur- during this, and congratulations to our incumbents who are, were reelected, and to the, to newcomers. Uh, I think this new city council will be, uh, very strong, as this one was, it was a pleasure serving with all of you, and I'll be watching. I might call in once and go, hello, 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 just, just to bring, just to bring some humor to the meeting, so, thank you, everybody, for, for, uh, the, the, the four years were, were great, working with all of you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Trent?
Okay, so, this was my, my, yeah, please do that.
You can't follow that.
I can't make anyone laugh like that, that is, yeah, that was, that was an SNL moment, it continues to be. Okay, so this was my first election, uh, that I needed, that I needed more than four votes. And, um, so I wanted to take this moment to express my gratitude to the citizens of Rochester who voted for me and entrusted me with the honor of serving our city and the council for the next four years, and it is truly humbling, your votes and trust in me to represent your interests and responsibilities, I hold that to the utmost seriousness. I am grateful to the opportunity the city council gave me a year ago to serve, and their encouragement, and your encouragement, and your shared knowledge have been invaluable to me, and your kindness that you showed me, and patience as well. So, despite the competition of six candidates for four seats, this election was characterized by a commendable lack of acrimony or bitterness among us. It is a testament to our spirit of camaraderie and mutual respect, I couldn't have been nicer. Last but not least, by knocking on doors, I met so many lovely people who care about the city as much as I do, and they shared their concerns, but mostly overwhelmingly, they said they loved the city and they had no complaints. And I was glad that I did get the opportunity to knock on doors and, and meet people, even though it was very, very scary at first. Um, I don't know if the first few people knew what I was trying to say, I had someone with me helping me, saying, okay, you have to introduce yourself, then, you tell them you're sorry you interrupted, eh? So, I got some good insights and questions, of which I will be, uh, uh, report, pursuing, and I will report back to them. So, there are more challenges that are in this growing city, such as, um, that are coming up, and I feel that is infills housing and future development and more, and I'm ready to take that challenge on, and I look forward to it. So, I did want to thank, uh, Mayor Bixson and, uh, Councilmember, um, Mark Albrecht for endorsing me and letting me use them, use them as a talent on my, uh, marketing materials. You took very good pictures and said a lot of really cool things about me, and I also want to congratulate, um, Councilmember Doug Gould, and, um, Christian Hauser, and, uh, Debbie Jones, and, um, I want to thank them, uh, for being such, uh, great people to run against, and also, Dave Bertolletti, you were very gracious, so, hope to see you again, and, um, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. So, I'd like to also, uh, congratulate everybody who won, and everybody who ran. Again, I say, that you have to put yourself out there, and that is not always easy, so I have the utmost respect for that. And Doug, congratulations on a four-year term. Um, as one who back in the day had a two-year term, uh, four years is probably better. Two years comes awfully quickly. Also, just as a, as a note, I know a lot of years, we've had a, our city council meeting the day after Lonnyop, but the way the schedule falls this year, it is going to be a week later. So, Lonnyop is the 20th, our council meeting is the 27th, not the next day, which we've traditionally, um, done, and I think some people were, some people were confused, I was confused a little bit at first myself. And then also tonight, just, um, and anybody out here who's here is welcome, we have a little going-away cake, uh, for, um, Mark and Ann, who we, I, I didn't know wasn't going to be here, and we'll do something for Ann at a later date, um, so there's cake back there if people are, want to, and just, happy holidays to everybody, uh, if we don't see you before Thanksgiving, have a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you all at all of our events that are coming up, Lonnyop and things. Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Let them eat.
Let them eat.